We shall call the committee's order. Uh, people, please, as I was at forum.
Yes.
Commissioner Carter. Commissioner Carter.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fossett. Commissioner Bedard. Your vice chair, Wheeler. Excellent. There's a court.
Thank you. And shall we do the pledge of allegiance? The front of agents to the United States of America, a republic, where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, can I take any public comments on items not on the agenda? Do we have anybody online?
Three attendees, but no hand raised.
We'll move on to items for consideration. All right, item number one, minutes. Do we have any question on this? Right here, and then can I have a motion?
I move to accept the minutes.
Move to second. Okay. All right, can we have a call for the vote?
Um, check on.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Fossett.
Yes.
Commissioner Bedard.
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number two, we have commission updates.
I have a PowerPoint that I will be sharing.
Did you want that?
All right, everyone. Good evening, commissioners. Anthony Carneseca Staffley is on the library commission. Um, I'm going to be going through the updates that were completed over the past. I want to say it's been about six months that we've been working on these commission updates for all of our commissions. Um, and all of these updates tonight are specific to the library commission. So, um, it'll be necessarily for all of you. So, um, in the past, library commission had seven members, two from Los Altos Hills, and we met monthly. Um, moving forward, it is five members, one from Los Altos Hills, that will meet bi-monthly. Uh, the months have been agreed upon based upon every other month's structure in accordance with taking off July and December. Um, but those months have been adjusted around to make the meetings work out. And just so you guys know, this is all in your packet as a report. I've just put it into a PowerPoint, uh, document for you guys. Um, these are the new, uh, library commission powers and duties. Uh, the library commission itself shall serve as the principal liaison between the city council of Los Altos and Los Altos Hills and the Santa Clara County Library District, as well as the various community entities that help to fund the library branches, uh, review the Los Altos library programs, services, and facilities, uh, conduct community outreach. So that's, uh, an important facet of the library commission, especially calling, uh, important, uh, public input would happen to the library commission for facilities, programs, and services. Um, perform such other tasks as requested by city council, which I'll be getting to shortly. There is a request from city council, um, serve as a forum for community input, as I mentioned before, submit an annual report to the council, and perform other tasks assigned as they come up. So attendance and participation, uh, the majority of members are required for an in-person, in-person for a meeting to take place. So if a majority of the commission is participating remotely, that would not qualify. We need to have a majority of the commission here in person. Uh, commissioners must attend seventy-five percent of the regularly scheduled meetings in order to continue on the commission moving forward, and the commissioners may attend no more than twenty percent of the meetings remotely. Um, if you are seeking the opportunity to participate remotely, please speak with me, and I can help you navigate that process. Um, it's not terribly complicated, but the chair must confirm that the commissioner has posted the agenda at the meeting place. So wherever that is, if that's at your home or, um, at a hotel, if you're on a trip or an Airbnb, you would need to notice that exact location and then put the agenda available for anyone who'd like to see it. The reporting, as I mentioned, commissions do provide a work plan to counsel in the first quarter of each calendar year, and then, uh, the commissions will provide an annual plan based upon that work plan to city council at the joint meeting. So the joint meeting will be the opportunity for the commission to report back on a broader scale on where the work plan is and where the commission's moving forward. Ad hoc subcommittees, so, um, let's skip so we can see all the words there. So ad hoc subcommittees, they must be ad hoc in nature. They cannot be standing subcommittees. Uh, they do not require posting meeting in public staff supporter minutes, so the ad hoc subcommittees can meet on their own. It allows a specific topic and timeframe of a specific focus area for the library commission to be completed without needing agenda items. That being said, it cannot be standing, um, in a way that it cannot be an area of continuing jurisdiction, so it cannot be something that is, uh, broad enough per view of the library commission as a whole. It has to be a very focused area for a specific time period. Um, it cannot be established in multiple years, so you can't say we're going to establish an ad hoc subcommittee, and then at the end of that year when it's up, say that we'd like to start a new ad hoc subcommittee under that same topic. So it's a defined time period of, uh, one year. Um, must report findings out to the full commission. So you're going to see, you don't, or you see it on the agenda report today, actually. Ad hoc committee reports is going to be a standing subsection of the agenda moving forward. That will allow the opportunity for the ad hoc committees to call out. Uh, previously, that was done by the standing committee reports. So now we have the ad hoc committee report section in the agenda. Um, commissioners can only serve on one subcommittee at a time. So for the library commission, that would mean that two, uh, the, I think I have it on the slide coming up. Um, so I'll wait for that. But the motion of the establishment of the subcommittee must meet these criteria, which is that it has to be comprised solely of members of the commission establishing the subcommittee, um, consists of less of the, less than the quorum. So for a commission with five members, it would be required that the ad hoc subcommittee has two. Um, it includes the defined purpose that we talked about and is less than one year in duration, and will automatically terminate when the final report is given out. So, um, at that meeting, when the ad hoc committee finally ends its tenure and has completed its work, they provide that report out, and then the ad hoc committee will cease to exist. And then, here we go. The library commission has four standing subcommittees that will be disbanded. You can see them right there. Awareness, infrastructure, futures, and services. Moving forward, the library commission can create two ad hoc subcommittees with two pairs of commissioners. So that would meet the requirement of less than three, so less than the majority of the commission. Um, that would mean that one individual from the commission would not be on the two ad hoc subcommittees. That being said, um, there is no requirement to have ad hoc subcommittees. So if the library commission chooses, um, it may be pertinent to have one ad hoc subcommittee for a topic, and then as things come up, they can, you can add in an ad hoc subcommittee if there's a really focused area that becomes an area of need, um, but it's up to the commission's discretion. Commissioner liaisons. So, uh, commissioner liaisons are assigned by the commission as a whole to act as liaison to other boards, commissions, or agencies without necessarily needing a subcommittee. So it's one individual who represents the commission for another organization. Uh, the commission should be updated on a regular basis. It's not in your agenda report tonight, but you will see, uh, commissioner liaisons report section. So if you do have commissioner liaisons for organizations, those individuals could provide the report outs at a standard meeting just within that section. Um, the positions supported by the liaison are to be in alignment with the commission and the city council if they've considered the topic. So when attending meetings of organizations, it's important to remember that if you are acting in the commissioner liaison role, you are speaking on behalf of the commission and the city. So what you're saying should be in alignment with what's been decided by the commission. Um, if the commission hasn't necessarily taken a position, it would be important to recognize that fact when speaking at the meeting and say that the commission has not taken a position, city council has not addressed it yet, but I would believe that this would be the path. Um, commissioner liaisons can be a member of the, of the public. That is an important note. So if the commissioner does want to select a member of the public to serve as a commissioner liaison, that is possible. So for the library commission, um, you can appoint an official commission liaison to any of these external organizations. I just listed the organizations that the library commission is looking closely and are already have a good relationship with within the city. Um, at the August library commission meeting, Commissioner Fossett volunteered, uh, to serve as the representative to library patio task force. Moving forward, uh, staff does recommend that the commission, when that's brought up as an item for commissioner liaisons, if, um, Commissioner Fossett wants to continue in that role, and when the commissioners agree, uh, formally identify her as the official commissioner liaison to the library task force. Council liaisons, so council liaisons are no longer required to be at every meeting, um, but the council liaisons will meet with the commission chair and staff liaison once per year in addition to the joint meeting. So more than likely, that will offset to a distance from the joint meeting, so that way there's two meetings within the year that happen with the council liaison. Um, council liaisons shall not direct, guide, or unduly influence the policymaking work of the city's advisory bodies. Uh, our council liaison for the library commission is Mayor Meadows. So if you have any questions, you can always feel free to reach out to her directly, and she'll be able to answer any questions. Conflict of interest. So there's two conflict of interest sections within the commission handbook. Um, I know this is a lot of information. The good news is that it's all in the packet, so if, uh, if it feels overwhelming or too much information, you can read it back, and I'm always happy to meet individually if you have specific questions. So perceived conflict of interest. So perceived conflict of interest may arise from relationships, interests, serving on bodies or boards that have overlapping jurisdiction, or, um, any appearance that the official duties of the commissioner may be influenced by that, um, perceived conflict. So the key part here of perceived conflict of interest is that commissioners must notify the staff liaison, which is myself, so let me know if you think there's a perceived conflict of interest for a specific issue that's going to be discussed by the library commission. Um, and then commissioners must disclose the perceived conflict of interest. So moving forward, if you do feel that there may be a conflict of interest with a particular issue, you can feel free to disclose it to the commission and to the public, and that would meet many of the needs. That being said, if it is something that you're concerned may be more than a perceived conflict of interest, and you really need to ask the question of staff, the city attorney, your city council liaison, all of us are here to answer and hopefully help as much as we can. Um, the commissioner should seek out the advice of the city attorney or FPPC if you have specific questions, um, especially as it starts to get into the, um, legal side. Um, I'm a city employee, not the city attorney, but I'm happy to give you, um, my best understanding of where we are within the rules and regulations. So conflict of interest. Um, per state law, public official, including commissioners such as yourselves, may not engage in any activity for compensation that is inconsistent, incompatible, or in conflict with official duties of the city. So commissioners may not accept any compensation for their roles on the commission, as that would be a direct conflict of interest. So the key distinction here is that a perceived conflict of interest is that there's a perception potentially that, based upon a relationship or, um, a standing within the community or an organization, that there may be an issue with the role of the commissioner. A true conflict of interest is if there's actual compensation being given for your role within the organization. Um, it is ultimately the responsibility of the commission member to identify whether they may be engaging in these issues. Um, like I said, the city attorney should be consulted as early as possible if you have specific questions. I, I do mean it when I say that I offer my time to meet with you. I'm happy to take a call if you have questions. Um, we can talk about this. I know in a public forum, we may not always want to talk about those potential issues, so if you'd like to talk directly with me, please let me know. All right. And very convenient for tonight, we will be doing the election of a chair and a vice chair. Uh, the commission appoints a chair and vice chair annually, and at the first meeting in October, which is tonight. And unfortunately, no member of a commission may serve consecutive terms as the chair, so they will change annually. So, uh, Chair Crane, this will be, uh, her last meeting as chair. Um, the chair is able to become the vice chair, and the vice chair is able to become the chair in those scenarios, but the chair cannot stay consecutive for multiple years. And I think I repeated it a lot, but I, I think it's important to continue to repeat. I am always available if you have questions about commission updates. I know this was a lot. It's been about six months in the works. I'm happy to answer questions, as well as, I know our council liaison, Mayor Meadows, I saw her earlier this week, and she did express that if you do have questions for her directly, please reach out, and the city attorney is definitely always available if you need. Uh, that's Joey Houston. I can give you her information.
So I just had a couple of things I noted. Um, I just wanted to confirm, uh, a liaison can be a member of the public. Okay, so we can. And that might be a way of getting people involved in the commission is perhaps a liaison, and that they may also want to show your attention. So just a thought. Um, it said, "The motion of establishment must include that the ad hoc subcommittee is comprised solely of members of the commission establishing the ad hoc subcommittee." So, so two people are, so only those two people, but then can those two people work with other community groups and invite somebody to work with them? For example, from friends, from Lolly, from any of the organization?
I think depending on the scope of the ad hoc committee, if it pertains to the scope, I don't see an issue with them, reaching out to them for research and information, just so long as no other members of the commission are involved with that ad hoc committee's work.
Okay, okay. That makes sense, because we also work with that, yeah, with that, with the library. Okay. And then it's, um, and then I just, because it's two members, I assume that individual commissioners can be assigned or volunteer or offered to work on topics if they're interested in them.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's not a subcommittee, but I assume that in, um, individual commissioners could be assigned or could offer to work on topics of interest to them. Um, I know that there's many, in, many, um, items that the library is looking into, and it might go very slowly if we have to have, you know, two people and two people. So it could be somebody says, hey, I'll raise my hand and I'll do some work on that.
There's no issue with an individual commissioner going to complete work. The key is whenever work's being completed, bringing it back to the commission for a report out. So, um, similarly to reporting back on what exactly being done.
Questions?
Yes, okay. Uh, so on the report out, how do we do the report? Uh, do we send email to you and the commissioners, or do we have to wait for a commission meeting?
I think it would be best to wait for a commission meeting, um, so that way that could be the ad hoc committee report out section.
Uh, and, uh, if, so the council, the committee, the liaisons aren't required to attend our meetings, but what's the general, are they going to attend our meetings? I mean, I know they watch the video, but I'm probably here.
I can tell you that, uh, Mayor Meadows is watching right now remotely, so I think that, um, the, the real intent was that was to give flexibility for the council members who have a significant amount of meetings, but I know that Mayor Meadows is very committed to be in the council liaison.
Thank you. And you answered the ad hoc subcommittee, Mike. Yeah, how do we draw on other people's, uh, expertise? Uh, it's a big deal. And that's it.
Any, did, did any members of the public want to comment? Okay. All right, moving on to item number three. There we go. Commission reorganization. So this is reorganized to select a chair and vice chair to serve through September 2024. And do you want to give us any guidance with, for her to that?
Um, I think if anyone would like to nominate someone or, um, provide a, an explanation if they would like to be elected or selected for one of the roles, um, really it's up to the commission itself to make the.
Okay. I can't do it. But to nominate someone? To nominate or, or, yeah. Of course, to nominate for, um, chair or to, because we would have to take chair first and vice chair, or to, if it's your interest.
Okay, I would nominate Christine. May I nominate Commissioner Bedard? Which end?
And I will second Christine's nomination.
I'm, I'm, I'm a bit of a long subject. Is that actually sure what we do? So you know, okay.
Um, sorry, I, I, I did tell you that I was willing to do it. I mean, I still am, but I know there's other people that are also willing.
So I think this is a very important role, especially with the reorganization, uh, and how we do it. I also have a different point of view of the chair than others might. I think, uh, the fact that it goes year to year is very important, whereas, you know, this is like a long-term thing, i.e. if, you know, whether I would like to be at the chair once again before I leave, uh, the commission, but, uh, you know, I'm here to help. I've done it, you know, for during COVID and stuff, so, uh, I'm easy either way, but however we do it, I think it behooves us to just make sure that, uh, we hand it off well. That's all.
And I did, yeah, I have said that I'd be willing to do it, but, uh, Commissioner Bedard suggested that I be vice chair to his chair for a year, and I would learn the ropes and nothing, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, yeah. In the same breath, it could either go, it could easily go the other way. So, uh, you know, it's, uh, that's why we're here, is to vote on this. So we have dominate, I mean, we have one nomination for president. Is anyone? Uh, chair, so.
Yeah, so I was trying to think of process, so we have a nomination and a second, right? So do we vote on that on first, because then we have another nomination?
So we had a first nomination, and I didn't, there was no second for the first nomination.
He, he did.
No, no, so there was a nomination for Commissioner Fossett by Commissioner Carter that was not seconded.
No one seconded it.
No, I.
I thought you, you seconded it.
So, yeah. So just to, so. Let me, let me try and, so I believe Commissioner Carter nominated Commissioner Fossett. Commissioner Fossett immediately then nominated Commissioner Bedard, then Commissioner Bedard seconded the nomination for himself.
No, seconded with the one, the vice chair, right?
No, no, it's chair. Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry. I misunderstood because of the timing, so it looks like there was a nomination and a second for Commissioner Fossett to become the chair. And so because there's a second, now you could take a vote for that chair.
Okay, we have, we did have another nomination, so just.
And I didn't hear a second for that.
Right. And we just know that you can have, well, can you have a nomination, two nominations in two seconds? I'm very confused, we need to have our orders. Okay, so let us call for the vote on the nomination of Commissioner Fossett as chair.
Chair Crane?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter.
You want the job? Walk away if I'm guessing. You know, I mean, a job, not my first choice. Do I vote? But, well, I guess I'd lose now because I nominated.
Yeah, but you can, or yes to do, I hope yes for you, absolutely.
Okay, then I might as well vote, yeah.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem good. So I think you still have to vote, this.
Okay, so, so far we've only gotten, took Commissioner Carter, yes. Commissioner Fossett. Commissioner Bedard, yes. Motion passes for.
Congratulations.
So far.
You're ready to go.
Oh, now?
Oh, yeah.
All right, um.
Oh, we are, um, so.
So, yeah, she's, yeah.
I'm back to you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I got the.
Okay, good thing.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Um, I assume we are, oh, we still need to vote for vice chair?
Yeah.
Um, for nominations.
I nominate Pierre Bedard.
Any other nomination? Uh, second, second? I'll be ready to vote.
Are we second for Carter?
Yeah.
Sir Fossett?
Uh, yeah.
Commissioner Carter?
Yeah.
Commissioner Crane?
Yeah.
Commissioner Bedard?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, um, commissioner liaison appointments. Um, does the commission want to appoint official commissioner liaisons to any external organizations?
I can see this.
I believe we do have to officially appoint some to the library patio project task force, is that correct?
I would nominate Chair Fossett to the patio project task force.
Hey, so good.
Wow, I can lean him. Any other nominations?
I, I do have one comment about it, is a, are you, uh, in terms of your role, I noticed that we have Lolly and the task force separated. Uh, is that wise? Should it be both? Uh, this is the question and clarification, should you have both?
Are we going to appoint an official commissioner liaison to Lolly? Is that, um, not required?
It's not required, but I was just saying, wouldn't it be?
Should we discuss all that first?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um.
Oh, sorry. No, I, my only clarifying question was, would your role also cover, uh, Lolly? And I would, I mean, my, it would make sense if it did. That's all. That's my only point.
Move on out to, come into a moment.
I, I, I think it may make sense to, to have one person appointed, uh, to Lolly, and that would encompass the library patio project task force. Is that, if that's, and, and I, I do think you should be able to speak up as to whether you feel that that's, because you did step into that role, but if you feel that that's too much given your, given your new duties, then I think that's important, we want to consider that.
Um, I guess I should ask when Lolly needs?
Lolly needs every month on the fir, the second Tuesday at four o'clock.
Lolly meets every month on the, the second Tuesday at four o'clock. Our next meeting is this Tuesday and it will be here at the community center in person. There will not be any Zoom connection.
And I do want to note for the commissioner liaison role that it is up to the commissioner, who's the commissioner liaison and the commission's discretion, how involved the commissioner liaison will be. So you do not need to attend every meeting of the group that you will be the liaison for. It's merely that you would be the official representative for the organization if you attend their meeting and provide some type of comment on behalf of the commission.
I see. Okay, I'm just double checking my calendar. Excuse me.
And may I get a little bit more background? So we, I sent out as the current president.
Thank you, Julie.
We don't have any in the middle this time. So as the current president of Lolly, I sent out the agenda to the Lolly group about a week ahead of time. And then as it gets into the final draft, the final draft oxymoron there, I sent it out to the liaisons and other invited guests. And you'll see that there's a general session and then there's executive session. And at the executive session, everybody who's not a Lolly board member drops off and we continue various other discussions. And you, we do ask that our contacts, our liaisons get, provide a report on what their organization is doing. Very short, nothing formal unless you want it to be. And we do discuss the patio project at that time in addition to other topics. And I also want to thank you for your extended report on the patio project that you just, that was there. It was wonderful to read. So thank you.
Maybe an hour, the Lolly board, maybe an hour, so about an hour is all.
Okay, I guess if the board feels the need to appoint a Lolly liaison, I think they can do it if we have a question.
My only point was that if you were doing the patio one, you, you know, yeah, it would just make sense. That was my only point. We don't need to appoint anybody or not. That was, I was just really a comment.
As in courtesy, Lolly has been inviting the friends in the library commission to our meetings. It's not in our bylaws to do it. It's just been a practice that's been established for.
Okay, so we need to take a vote on whether the commission wants to appoint me to be the commission liaison to the patio project task force and Lolly. Is that correct? Did I get that right?
I move that we appoint Chair Fosset to the, be the Los Altos Library Endowment Liaison and also the main library patio project task force liaison.
I think that motion. Take a vote. Yes.
Vice Chair Bedard?
Yes.
Commissioner Crane?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item five on the agenda.
Oh, we have, we have a couple.
Oh, we're not finished yet. Oh, you want to appoint liaisons for the other.
So once again, just a note for the commission that that was the only action that necessarily needed to take place because of the library patio task force.
That had already been formally serving along.
Correct. So moving forward, now you could have a discussion about whether you think it would behoove the commission to have a representative for any of these organizations. And that being said, tonight will not be the end all be all. You can discuss this at another time if you feel that in the next couple of months, it turns out that you do need a representative for one of these organizations.
I would just like to say, I attend the Friends of the Library Board meetings as an observer. And I also attend the NCLA. But if we need a liaison, I'd be happy to take on the Friends and report on the Friends to library and volunteer for that.
And I, I think that would be great. I think it's important that we maintain our relationship with the groups. And if you take the Friends, I'll take the NCLA. Unless you want to, okay, I, I would be happy to do that. So.
A motion for, take it individually. I think that's probably better.
So I move that Commissioner Bedard, oh, Vice Chair Bedard, and be appointed as the commissioner liaison to be Friends of Los Altos Library.
I second.
I guess.
Vice Chair Bedard?
Yes.
Commissioner Crane? Commissioner Crane?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
All right, then.
Well, I'll make the motion.
Oh.
I'll move that Commissioner Crane, be appointed commissioner liaison to the North County Library Authority.
I'll second that.
Chair Fosset?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bedard?
Yes.
Commissioner Crane?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
We need to move on to item five on the agenda. Yes, subcommittees and ad hoc committees, disbanding of existing standing subcommittee. Discussion of potential creation of ad hoc committees, meeting criteria. Anthony.
I'm happy to give a short little update. I think, as I mentioned before, the commission will need to. As I mentioned before, regarding subcommittees and ad hoc committees, the subcommittees that are currently in place, it would be beneficial for the commission to take action to disband the subcommittees that exist for standing subcommittees. And then ultimately, if there's a potential interest by the commission in creating an ad hoc subcommittee that meets the criteria that's outlined within the report, you can do so. The commission also has the ability to do so at some point at a further meeting. So if tonight you would like to create an ad hoc committee on a particular issue, this would be the time. Does that make sense? I'm happy to answer any questions.
I was just gonna say, since we don't meet again until January, which would mean we would have a full special meeting to create an ad hoc subcommittee.
So I, I think my, my, I think I would move to disband the existing standing subcommittees.
No, I was gonna say, I, I do think we should make sure to check for public comment as well.
Oh, thank you. Okay, we'll, we'll check for public. Thank you for that. I do think that, well, we have been given an opportunity to present to the city council. They have asked us to present. And so I think we would need to establish an ad hoc committee for that purpose tonight so that we can be prepared to provide feedback to the commission and, and move it along. Do you want to provide more information about that?
Item number seven, for your consideration tonight, you do see the potential improvements of the library as a discussion topic. That is a direction from city council. So at their September twenty six city council meeting, under future agenda items, council member Daly, and it was seconded by Mayor Meadows, did request that the library commission create a, a report on the potential possible improvements for the library. I think that direction is very broad in nature. It allows the commission to get creative in their possible improvements. So this would be a great focus, specific area that could last for a determined period of time for an ad hoc subcommittee to exist. So they could meet in the time between now and January, and then at the January library commission meeting, they could provide an update to the group, get final sign off, and then ultimately present to the city council at a study session, which will be a very exciting opportunity for the library commission, present their findings and potential improvements for the library itself. Questions?
I have a question. What, how do you define possible improvements?
I think that that was intentionally vague to allow the commission the flexibility to be able to really look at the full gamut of potential options. So it gives the flexibility for the commission, and if there was an ad hoc subcommittee, to really look at the range of improvements. And I know that council did specifically request that the commission provide as many options as possible. So it could be presented.
Everything we've suggested has been a possible improvement.
And I think that this will be a great opportunity for the commission to present directly to city council on this specific. And before there's any motions, take public comment as well. I'm happy to answer questions.
Am I only, so this was a surprise. I, we didn't, you know, we didn't know that this was coming. But I think, to be fair, that Pierre and I have been, you know, on the futures committee, the previous futures committee, we have been doing a lot of the work. So I think it's probably fair, especially given your new duties, that, that we raise our hands for this work. So I raised my hand. I think it's big for Pierre.
Yes, I mean, I think there's an expectation that we form, and I need to listen to the tape, to the video and hear what the city council said, but they called this out specifically to address some of the issues that Julie and I have been working on and presenting to the NCLA as part of the future subcommittee. So I would, I guess, do we need to move to form an ad hocs or anyway?
Take, take public comments and then if there is any, and then the two motions would probably be disbandment of the standing and then.
Public comment?
Yes.
Chair Fosset, congratulations.
I just have a question. Is the study session going to be, and perhaps Anthony would have an answer. Would this, is the study session going to be delayed until after January or January or after?
Correct. Correct. So we, we are working on the calendar in for this, but there is an expectation that it's okay to wait until January.
My question. Thank you.
And I believe there's an additional point.
Hi, this is Michelle. Nice to meet you. In terms of the future improvements, I want to make some recommendations to be on. I wanted to have some accommodations for special needs, maybe like sensory, frame reading environment is one of my recommendations. I can give examples, but did I go on? Like, for example, having like handful of headsets available for special needs kids who have sense, those kids or adults who have, you know, hearing, some, some kids are really sensitive to the noise and it can get very noisy in the library. So, you know, for example, in the zoo and things like that, they provide packets and, you know, that, that people can borrow. So that's one idea. Like some sensory accommodations within the library space will be very nice. I have some examples I can provide, but like, like cushions or like a little booth or little area that they can have a little sensory break. That's, I think, currently in the library. We're not really serving the special needs community.
I'll put comment online, but I'll check when we get back to you.
I want to say thank you so much for that because, yes, I think entering an Alpide and, and you on his library. I know that that's also something that our, our community librarian feels about. Interestingly enough, this commission did vote on headsets at one point. I think that's, that's, that's still in, perhaps something for discussion, but we did vote to approve that. And so I just want to thank you for that. Yeah.
Thank you.
So motion to disband the subcommittees, we actually need to vote on that? Suppose we, a motion to disband the subcommittees.
I think I got a phrase in here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Crane?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Moving on, a motion proposed on.
No, no, I was gonna say a motion to form an ad hoc subcommittee in support of the NCLA project as requested by the city council.
I would. I would amend it to say, add, I guess, official language, an ad hoc subcommittee regarding possible improvements to the library at the commission, something along the lines of direct. So maybe it's an ad hoc subcommittee focused on the study session as directed by city council.
Would say so.
Um, I think so. We're looking at a motion to form an ad hoc subcommittee, Commissioner Bedard and Commissioner Crane, to discuss possible improvements, to work on possible improvements to the library and focus on a report for the study session scheduled sometime next year.
I second.
And, and the motion should include the information on the bullet points in the report, if you have.
Okay, the motion must include the ad hoc subcommittee, implies solely members of the commission. Well, we don't, we haven't that, I believe, we had to say on this, consists of less than a quorum. We just had two members. Includes a defined purpose, a timeframe to accomplish that purpose. We've covered that because we are shooting for the study session and will automatically terminate. So the ad hoc commission will terminate when a final report is given to the commission, which is not determined when, after less than one year, right?
At the, at the report out, at the final report out date, it would terminate.
Okay, the, the commission will, ad hoc commission, committee will automatically terminate when a final report is given to the commission, or final report is put out, to the commission or to the council or.
I would say, I would say to the committees fine, so that way, or to the commission.
Final report to the commission. So the ad hoc committee will automatically terminate when a final report is given to the commission in less than twelve months. Will not be established, the ad hoc committee, the similar goals will not be established or renewed in multiple years and is advisory in nature and is not established to work on an item where continuing jurisdictions, well, that is the case currently. So this is our first ad hoc subcommittee, so. Having me phrase all this, do we still have a second? Do you have a vote?
Yes. Chair Fosset?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bedard? Commissioner Crane? Commissioner Crane?
Yeah.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item six. The update on the library patio task force. Fairly lengthy report, who's, does anyone need me to read it? If people had an opportunity to read it, scan it at least. Do I need to read it through great detail? Have you guys had a chance to look at the, the report on the library patio project? Have you guys had a chance to look at the, the report on the lighting patio project?
We did too.
Okay. So you want me to skim through it? For the landscape art, the architect. Report and the opportunity for line up with the orchard, the survey report due hopefully sometime last week. The goal is to meet within a month by Zoom to review preliminary concepts after analyzing reports. There will be two workshops to refine the conceptual design, which will then be presented to the planning commission for a design review hearing. Then we move into the design development stage. We review the calendar, milestone dates. Next meeting is already scheduled, I believe, for late October. When floor plan and concept will be presented in more detail. Late November, the goal is a study session with the planning commission and city council. Then hopefully in January, a formal public hearing of the planning commission, where the full conceptual design will be presented. The order is to complete the approval process in January and then start on detailed design and development. Any questions so far? Time enough to go through it in too much detail because it's quite lengthy. After construction plan completed, construction pay will be handled by the library district using the normal government contracting process. Anticipation is best estimate of completion of the project in 2024. We reviewed potential constraints related to the orchard. Most important being that Jane Hackett reported there will be no net loss of tree sites due to the patio as currently planned. However, there are some folks who are passionate about restoring the orchard to this historic number of trees, but the new irrigation system will not support this. Tree sites are going to be lost. It won't be because of the patio, but she stressed the importance of open communication. So there are no misunderstandings. She talked about plans to beautify the orchard. Then I think the important thing here is we talked about ideas for the conceptual design and we covered a lot of topics. If there's anything that we missed, this is where the library commission needs to speak out. And we talked about entrances through access from city hall side of the library. And Jane Hackett requested an entrance from the museum side. Freddie asked if the patio fencing would be aesthetically pleasing, transparent, really highlight the orchard. Rose asked for flexible space that can be reconfigured into one to three areas. Movable tables and chairs requested. The district will provide all the furniture. Suggestions for benches wrap around the periphery of the patio interior. Estimate of occupancy sneaker limits was requested, but more details of the floor plan. We talked about shade alternatives, trees, umbrellas filling while the trees grow. It was talked about the high cost of shade covering material. That's why the architect of trees are much cheaper. And movable umbrellas. Other shade structures such as though Judith Gilroy, library work desked metal open pergolas. Rose requested storage be incorporated into the design. Don't sound so ask whether the city might want to consider putting in a basement under the patio just to take the opportunity to store it. Which would now hugely increase cost of the timeline. Which he himself doesn't want to see. Other considerations outside, the area will need to be safely secured when the library is closed. Lighting will be necessary at night for safety. Downlighting options favored. The area should look attractive from the outside. Somebody requested, can we improve the appearance of the fencing from mechanical area? Can we get mitigation of the HVAC in the mechanical area sound? Any other input, any comments, any, anything anyone needs to see in the conceptual design that we have to consider?
I'll just say this, I think you're public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any public comment? Any public comment?
Well, this is a completely high level stage at the moment and this landscape architect has a great deal of experience and will be looking at many other library patios and for inspiration. So everything, there is nothing at all at this moment in time that is set in stone at all. So it will be, it'll be interesting to see what concepts he comes up with. He will come up with more than one concept and it will be, it, it really will be interesting. I think we all need to focus on is this is a patio that there's the two experts really. And so we hope that at the end of the day, they get what they want and what they need for the library. But, you know, input is really, really welcome and excellent. Thank you.
First of all, I'm very excited about the panel. But I wanted to ask, is there any prevention for like, you know, books getting stolen or anything like that? Because I know that you have multiple access. You know, when you enter the library, there's always Oh, really? So I'm just wondering if there is any prevention in place? In the nice, big space. In the patio side, because right now the library in the front entrance, there is that prevention, right? Like if you, if you take the book out without going through the system, it will hopefully be, I'm just wondering.
Unfortunately, you can't respond to all the comment directly. But it is noted by individuals.
Anybody else have a comment? I guess passing out to the commissioners now?
Yeah, I guess I just want to clarify, yeah, that the panel is going to be for children and adults, like, right? Yeah, so I would hope that it has, you know, sort of following on that, on the previous comments that we accessibility issues. Or issues for any accessibility are just, that's the one thing.
I, so I wouldn't, you guys aren't gonna like what I'm gonna say, but I really, 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 really wish that this project came back to the library commission. And I'm saying it not because I think the library commit, I mean, our value is saving you trouble later on down the road when it goes to council and when it goes to planning. That's the only, that's, you know, that's sort of why I'm being insistent on it. I don't know that I can make anything change. But I'm just saying as a, as a best practice, even if we call a special meeting and it's a dry run through us and it's seen as a dry run, it would be of value to the entire project. And I'd like to know also, I have a question, when will we see conceptual plans? Because I mean, the, looking back at the record, we saw stuff early on, but I know things have changed. You know, but it's a question.
The next meeting will be assumed. I assume that, you know, it's an open meeting.
No. Of course, it's not open.
Any other comments? Rose, Jennifer, did I miss anything?
So when will the public have the ability to weigh in on this?
The plan, if you look at the timeline, the plan is to hold a formal public hearing at the planning mission in January, where the conceptual design will be presented. And then one more round of refinement after that. Everyone hear that? Am I? Are you at the run?
I think, I know that that's a formal public hearing. But I would suspect that the study session with the city council would be a formal, it would be a, an open meeting. Do you think? I mean, I would think it would be.
It would be a public meeting as well. That topic may be a little different than this one. For the, for the patio specifically, I, I only have the information from the report from Chair Fawcett.
Yeah.
It would be January or
No.
Late November, there will be a study session with the planning commission and city council.
Yeah, so that meeting.
November would be.
I think that meeting will be public. I mean.
Okay. Any, any other comments?
Yes. Good report.
I had to know. Are we?
Action for this particular item, but if there's, if commissioners would like to provide direction, this is when you would receive the direction and then take it back as the commissioner liaison to.
Yeah, yeah. If there's any other input to the conceptual design, the, any.
I mean, if I could get us to vote on it, I'd vote that it come back to us before it goes to planning. But I don't know that a motion to that effect is going to get the necessary four votes to go forward, nor should it. That's just a comment I make.
Any, any other comments? Okay. Moving right along, next item. Item number seven, I think we already cut potential improvements to the library. I think we've covered that, haven't we? We, we created the ad hoc subcommittee.
Correct. I'll just say. I'll, I'll keep it brief. Really, this was an opportunity similar to the previous item where now that there's an ad hoc subcommittee formed Commissioner Crane and Vice Chair Bedard, you could provide direction to them if you wanted to in this public setting for kind of any feedback that you have for them as they move forward as the ad hoc subcommittee and then they will obviously come, hope to come back in January with a report for all of you on the possible improvements to the library. So this would be the study session.
And also we get the need to run up a public comment. So any input for, I guess, Carol, you have any, any, any comments? Or any input for the ad hoc subcommittee?
You mean for suggested things to improve the library?
What? That's
What it was?
Yeah, no.
So the, so the item is, it's, it's very vague, I understand. And I know that the commission, that the library commission does have a lot of information that the ad hoc subcommittee could pull from. But this was just the opportunity for the commissioners who may not be on the ad hoc subcommittee to provide any more information to the ad hoc subcommittee that you'd like them to consider. You don't need to discuss, you don't need to provide direction if you feel comfortable with them having the opportunity to create a rough draft and then come back.
I don't have any further comment. Do we have any public input?
It's a request from the, to this ad hoc subcommittee. I know that you've talked about some of the individual things that you'd like to do. And I was wondering, could you as a, just as a, a request or suggestion, could you break the projects up so that they might be entertained individually? So that if all of them can't be done, certain parts of them might be undertaken?
Then this will be ad hoc subcommittee. Have any comments on that?
I do. What we're really trying to do is set up, get a consultant in to make that, those determinations as to what can we do with how much we have and within the scope of the JPA. And the improvement of the services, we have to stay legal, which is really, we've really been trying to get the legal opinion from the, their lawyers to allow us to open up this, this quite honestly. And then to see what can be allocated to it, as you know, there are limits. But anyway, but that's really, it's, I'm not like, my mind is not into any particular feature. It's more access. At least that's what I'm telling myself, access to the funds.
Any further comments from the public? Item seven?
I do. Sorry. I understand, but I do think, I mean, listening to what I was at the city council meeting and at the NCL, I mean, when I think they that Sally and Pete made it clear that they want to see concrete suggestions for what to do with that library. And, and I do know that there are certain projects that you've already looked at and certainly that the, the librarians have asked for, you know, the restroom changes that must be made. And all I'm saying is for the rest of the library nonprofits, it would be useful to be able to have individual projects that regardless of, you know, that may, may be able to be funded with, with funds that do not have those restrictions, is what I'm saying. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Request of Anthony, can you give us the, where we show up in the tape?
Yes, I will send it out. So I'll actually send it to all the commissioners. So then you can have a chance to watch. It's, it's near the end of the meeting during future agenda topics. I will say if you slow it down a little bit, you can listen to it. So you can actually type it. That's what I did. So that's the, what you see in the commission report is the exact motion that was taken by.
Ready to move on? Okay, item eight, story walk discussion.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. So we have the opportunity to have permanent story walks in our community. And so this is a system wide, this will be a system wide initiative. And I can remember during the Com Valley Reads, we did have story walk. That was from the libraries coming down to the community center and it was very successful. And we, you know, as part of our strategic plan, I'm kicking forward. You know, we would like to have these more permanent story walks on next. And so, you know, and sorry, one more. So you'll see that if you're not familiar with a story walk, a story walk displays a, a book primarily for the audience, its family. And you read the book along your walk. And as we look at expanding this to a more permanent fixture in the community, we would have one story that would be the same at all the libraries. And we would choose somewhere in the community to have, have this story walk. And so, you know, the story works have proven, you know, to And so, um, you know, the story walks have proven, you know, to, um, you know, promote, thanks, I'm sorry, anywhere. You know, they promote physical activity while incorporating literacy. Um, they encourage families to like engage, um, together. Um, and, you know, for children to really just kind of have fun, um, you know, reading in a new, um, type of format. And so, um, there is an opportunity, um, forward with the, um, oh, I guess I'll backtrack here. So these are the temporary ones we've had. So, um, the Campbell, Cupertino, Los Altos, Milpitas, and Morgan Hill are, that one in the picture. And the next slide does have, um, more pictures of the one we had here. And so, um, one more slide forward, thank you. And so we have an opportunity to, to partner with the foundation, um, and with the city. And, um, the foundation would fund the hardware installation and work with the funding partners. Uh, the library's role is to collaborate with the installation, with the city, the ongoing maintenance, and as I mentioned, to provide the stories. Because, um, you know, with copyright restrictions, uh, we would take care of, um, making sure everything is in compliance. And the role of the city is, um, providing us with a public space for this permanent story walk and, um, collaborate with the library for the, for the installation. And so, um, as commissioners, um, I would love your input, you know, as residents and, um, you know, members of the community and, and, um, is where a story walk might work, um, for us. Um, if you move one more forward, um, so this is what the story walk, um, looks like, um, in the company. Um, and you'll see, um, it would be weatherproof and, um, with the installation, um, be resistant to many of the elements. And, um, this would be, um, a potential story, potential stories, um, for the story walk. They would have the story, they would have, um, details of what the, um, story walk is and some information about, um, you know, the funders and the, and the partners we're working with. And, uh, this is what I wanted to get to is kind of, um, you know, ideal location for installation. And what we're looking at is something that has high visitation by young families. Um, ideally would start at a parking lot or a main entrance. And, um, if possible, would lead to a pass by a playground, um, as, you know, an attraction for young families. Um, so kind of aligned with how long books usually are for, you know, child picture books are, seventeen frames, um, within line of sight from one next, one to the next. And, uh, would be about one-third to one-half of a mile long. Um, and we could adjust, you know, depending on the circumstances at each location. And so, um, you know, it's something to think about. We, we have some identified potential. That may be concrete. We're just kind of still in the beginning stages of this. But, um, a couple of, um, Mackenzie Park, uh, shoe park, is it a shop? So hard and, um, Heritage Oaks. Um, Mackenzie Park does have a playground. But, um, we're really open. Um, if you have suggestions, um, particular suggestions on location and down the line, um, you know, for the maintenance part of it and making sure everything, but, you know, the story walk is, um, you know, in this position and if there are any, um, you know, that needed, um, recommendations or adjustments to it that the library could do, um, if you happen to live by or walk by, um, that's, we'd be happy to have the commissioners help us with that as well. So it's going to be part of the community and, um, this is really the first step. So I'm happy to get questions or comments.
So I, so I have a question. Um, so I saw it's brilliant, it's lovely. Um, it, it doesn't seem to have like rail for kids who may not have sight. Or, or, you know, for kids who, you know, accessibility doesn't have speakers or children who may not be able to read.
It's very low tech.
Yeah.
You know, it does need to be very weatherproof. It needs to be, um, kind of, yeah. I, I will just say it's low tech in, with, with intention, um, in terms of they, there is possibility of vandalism and things. We want to make sure that we're able to upkeep those and that all those parts are replaceable. Um, you know, we're always looking at different formats and accessibility. I mean, it is just, um, a, um, you know, perhaps that's something that, you know, we're working with these different companies that could be inlaid into a plastic or, you know, a speaker box. But it is hard to upkeep that tech. And we even have wonderful weather, of course, here in California. So based on experiences that we've had nationwide, that's kind of the intent around that to kind of have that literacy engagement piece. In fact, certainly, you know, again, there's always, we appreciate all of the ideas. And we'll always look at how we can make it even better.
Yeah, I, I know you guys are very open to that. I appreciate that. And then, uh, just also to, again, potential other languages for, you know, non-native speakers, um, would be the only, um, other thing. And then since I'm a resident of South Los Altos, and sometimes there's a distinction between South and North, obviously. I think some of us, you know, the South would love to see this in, in South Los Altos. So I think, um, Mackenzie Park is maybe, you know, midline. Um, Shell Shoe Park is, is maybe a midline so that it can, you know, benefit.
Hmm?
Shell, is that one right down to?
Oh, it's down here. Okay. I'm sorry, I'm thinking, okay. So yeah, maybe, yeah, I would be open to, to considering, um, other, yeah, venues. But I think it's, it's great.
So I love it, uh, except it needs to be in the north. You know, it's like.
They need to, oh, they need to.
You need something on El Camino. Uh, you know, but, uh, it's a great idea, but, uh, and I'm really, you know, alternative ways of using it. Uh, even downtown, uh, I mean, it's just, yeah, it's, it's good.
Um, no, I'm.
I was also thinking, for what it's worth, that I, I don't know if the downtown business community would also be interested in funding something like this because it brings people to, you know, it's not far away, right? But yeah, I don't know if that's possible, having people cross major intersections, but.
Oh, um, there any public comment?
Some items that I would like to see in this is that because Los Altos has two libraries, I'd like to see two locations, because I would say the north and the south. And then also, I would like to know how often the storyboards would be changing. And the third one is, I strongly recommend that we look at rounded corners rather than ninety-degree corners, um, just because of the, the size of children. It's going to be in their line of sight. And I can just see a lot of injuries as potential.
Actually, you, um, oh, you said it. I have exactly the same comment because I have little kids. Uh, I want the corners to be safe because it works very, very sharp.
Any further comments? Um. Part of your job.
Okay, guys, this is other duties aside.
I'm just wondering too, you want them to be in parks where there's playgrounds? Yeah? That would be ideal. Okay. Um, okay. Mackenzie doesn't have one, a playground. It's got a dog park now.
No, it has inside, right?
I mean, they're in there a while.
Do they?
Yeah.
Do you walk inside?
Oh, the dog park is outside and then.
Oh, and then you walk inside.
Okay.
There's that other, there's the helping park of Fremont and Grant Hall that's beautiful.
With, with the, with the tennis courts.
Yeah, and big playground.
Marry me.
It's in South Los Altos. It's like Fremont and Grant.
It's marry yourself.
Marry me, marry me. That was what I was thinking. Um. This is, this is a, a base, a, a stand that you are selecting for everybody. Okay. Is it already selected?
There's very few options.
There's a few options.
I mean, again, there's a, just being in, outside in the element, certain sizes.
That's what I was worried about.
But I, again, there are very few options, but we will certainly look for the very best.
If maybe, like with kids, um, like, they have like plastic covers that you can do for like kids' monitors, that maybe there's a plastic cover that could go on so that it would cushion the, the sides. So you could still have your uniform, um, stands, but it would take care of the problems with the kids.
If I were to get some ideas, um, another place will be like right next to Shoeless Ranch, which grows, will be nice, because it's like walls. Um, that area might be next. I think, one more thing I want to add is that it might be better to avoid places where kids are always running around because they might bump into it. So you can take that into consideration. Yeah.
Anyone else?
Any further input? Are we ready to move on? Um, next item on the agenda is, uh, community partner updates. Um, do we have an update from Lolly?
Yes, we do. As I mentioned, Lolly does meet this Tuesday at four o'clock here at the community center. And it is our first meeting in person since COVID. I'm so excited. And I'm really excited that all of our board members said that yes, they could meet in person. So I was very happy, happily surprised. As you heard in the report about the patio project, the two contracts with SSA and the recommended project manager, um, have been approved by Lolly. So we will be funding those and moving forward on the next steps. We are planning a sponsors' recognition event. It will include an author presentation rep and reception. The date is set for April thirtieth. We do have an author confirmed, but I'm not going to announce that. I'm going to leave that for the big, big reveal later on. We're very excited about it. It is a Pulitzer Prize winner. And our strategic plan is in its final stages of completion. And we have worked very diligently to, um, align as much as possible with the county's, um, strategic plans so that whatever decisions we take based on our strategic plan, um, have been influenced by the county's strategic plan. And that's it. Any questions?
Will your, will your strategic plan be public, be made available once complete?
I will ask the board. It's very possible that we could post it on our website. Thank you.
Any further comments? Um, any comments from the public? Are we ready to move on? Next item is a report from Friends, the library. Let's see, I came prepared with a very brief report, but maybe I should give it, yeah?
Go ahead, yeah, nevermind.
Okay, um, it's been a quiet month, mainly, we are working on accommodating the library's needs, um, for the space, space, storage space that the ongoing sales team is currently using. Um, and the library needs it to make space for two more staff members, I believe. Um, so we're trying to figure that out. Um, uh, one proposal is to move the ongoing storage space into the corner, but I'm not sure if that's going anywhere yet. Um, that's an ongoing, pardon my pun, situation. Um, yeah, you have anything to add?
Yeah, I was going to say, I attended the Friends, I attend the Friends meetings. And, um, the big highlight is the, uh, Amazon sales are going break guns. Uh, they're doing almost two grand a week, uh, just on Amazon. Uh, but there was a lot of consternation over the moves going on within the library. Um, and I tried to make people understand that, uh, you know, to support what the library needs to do, uh, in all this. But I also pitched the fact that, um, you know, our library needs change. And it's for the users, it's for the employees, it's for everybody walking in that building. Um, and sort of tried to get them riled up in a positive direction as opposed to a negative direction of, you know, all you give us are these black things for volunteering. That's it. But, uh, overall, I think it went well. And you know what? At the end of the day, the Friends do the right thing and the library does the right thing and it all seems to work out. And, uh, they keep doing, uh, very well on the money side. Um, and, uh, volunteers seem to be going, you know, membership seems to be.
We have a, some only region of six hundred and fifty paying members this year.
Uh, can I ask what the moves are that people are concerned about?
Uh, maybe Rose would like to expand on that. I'm never going to sit in the end.
Story walk in here.
So, um, the, there is currently a room in the, um, kind of by the lobby, um, area of the, of the library that previously the donation room where the Friends used to accept donations. And so, um, after the Friends moved into the corner, ongoing kind of took over, Susan and team took over that space. Um, and so recently, we've added staff to the library, which is a good thing, you know, um, to support the community. And in order to make room for our staff, we have to move some of the children's, um, materials and supplies for all their programs into that room to add decks for the staff. So, um, so the, the children's workroom currently cannot accommodate the staff. And we need, you know, to prioritize, prioritize that, for, for staff area.
Yeah, I can't see it. So I'm just saying, if it's, because now we're on this ad hoc committee, I can't understand what's going on.
Yeah, and it's something we do need to take action with what we have, the resources. We could look at options down the line, but looking at what we need out because the staff are being hired now.
Yeah.
Any further questions or comments? Anything from the public? Ready to move on to the next item? Um, the report from the North County Library Authority.
Can you give that report? So, um, NCLA met earlier this week and, um, asked the library commission to continue to review how to use the funds. And also to look, there was a fairly lengthy discussion about the alternative suggestions that were posed, um, in January, March. Um, and that document was sent to all of the commissioners after the meeting. It was, it was very extensive. There are at least five op, options in addition to a, um, a remodel or a redesign of the library. And some of them included, uh, giving back the money to the taxpayers, um, stop collecting the money and just run out until our, the bond init, or the parcel tax initiative expires on twenty thirty. Um, or continue to collect and then just use that money beyond twenty thirty so we do not have to do another parcel tax request. But all of those possibilities do need to be further reviewed. And that was one thing that NCLA really needs, NCLA to look at, and also the library commission. We, um, also approved some invoices, one that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, that we did approve the invoice for the senior exemptions. Every year, seniors can apply for an exemption to not pay the parcel tax. And, um, there's a criteria that you go through. And it, it, it just saves seventy-six dollars a year. And there are usually anywhere from eight to eleven, twelve senior exemptions here between Los Altos and Los Altos Hills. So it's a very low number, but it is an opportunity for seniors to save some funding. And that's, those are the highlights at this point. Any question? There was a, it was a very healthy discussion. And a lot of kudos to Pierre and Julie and was it Nelson, who's the third person? Yeah, for all of the work and continued research that they do on the study of what can we do with the funds that NCLA has. And I recommend that if anybody has not read those reports that they should.
Are we ready to move on? Sorry, public comment?
I just wanna add one thing. Just wanted to add one thing. Sally and Pete, Sally Meadows is the mayor of Los Altos and Pete Daley, a council member who have two seats on the NCLA board, said that they wanted the city attorney of Los Altos to review the ballot measure and the JPA to see in her opinion what the funds could be used for. So that's one additional legal opinion that's gonna need to be rendered. What do they say? Put two attorneys in a room and they get three different opinions?
Any comments on that?
Yes. Exactly. We put a JD in the room and you'll get another opinion. Uh, so I disagree. I actually, I, I'm not sure I heard that, that to send it off to the city attorney. I mean, I heard send off the contract, you know, the RFP to the city attorney. But I don't know that I had her, I mean, I, I need to review that.
No.
If I was wrong, I was wrong. And the discussion that they were having was sort of the idea, to me, the JPA is the money's there to use for the services to, you know, for its purpose. And they started going in the direction of, well, do we return it back? Do we do this? And, you know, that to me was sort of out of scope with what we were trying to do. I thought. Only my opinion, but I thought it could be that feedback.
I understand that they, they want that city attorney, I actually think she drafted the.
She did.
She's, I think I'm more concerned about what her view is of how the money can be used legally.
Right, I think that, yeah.
Because they're afraid of litigation. They mentioned that they're, they're afraid of litigation in case someone in the community doesn't agree with either of the two opinions, assuming they're both positive.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say from my perspective, you know, we're providing, you know, the NCLA has us for information, and so we've been trying to provide the information. But I do think it's the NCLA's responsibility, us, the chairies, to decide what is the appropriate use of the funds ultimately. And so I think that's, that's their role. I think this is interesting because now we're bringing in the city council. So I think this answers the question for me because it was kind of like the chicken or the egg, who does what first? And so now it's, we're bringing in the council, which I think is, is to Sally's point, a good thing so that nobody's surprised.
And just to clarify Pierre's question about the city attorney, that was when I asked the question to have them explain why we needed a city attorney's opinion when we already had the first one. And then they repeated it just as was mentioned, that they wanna make sure that the city can do what we want to do.
Any further comments? Public? Ready to move on? Staff reports, county report?
Nice to see you. Congratulations on your enrollment. Jennifer Lee, comes our brand, presents our community library district. I just wanted to highlight a few things as we move into October. We are finishing up banned book scape. So it kicked off on Sunday with the theme Let Freedom Read. And, you know, as you all know, as advocates for public libraries, it really is foundational to what libraries do and are about in terms of making sure that everyone has the right to information and libraries serve as the open forum for ideas. So I wanted to, you know, again, highlight all the wonderful things that the library does, but the diversity of it. And that all of you will walk in and find something that you agree with and hopefully something that you don't agree with. Our goal is always to have titles that are diverse and representing of so many things. As you may have heard, banned have risen over the last few years, over 1,200 last year. And often these titles are by authors of color or from LGBTQIA community. And we know we need the choices. We know we need these diverse books. It creates and supports our democratic society. It is an opportunity for us to learn and question. It can be windows, right, to see other worlds, those books. And they can also be mirrors for affirming who you are or want to be. In general, of course, having all of these materials increases literacy engagement in our community. So I encourage you this week to pick up the banned book. I know all of our libraries have lots of ones from that there. It is also financial planning month. I know, so exciting, but I'm just really, I'm always so impressed by just all the money you can save if you use the free library resources. So, um, you know, you can get consumer reports on our website if you're buying that new appliance. You can take a virtual tour, Cindy, of the San Francisco Mint. And I also think that, you know, if you're into little investment, you wanna check out. So always lots and lots of resources for free for you to save a little money during financial planning month. Lots of other things in my report, but I just wanted to highlight a few things and always happy to take questions. And I'll send it over to Rose for your local luck.
Well, there's any comments, questions, public input?
Yes, that's a photo, thank you.
Well, Anthony's pulling up the report. I, if you haven't heard already, the pods are now ready to use. So, um, starting, they started on Monday. And if there's a QR code in the presentation that you can use, that will take you directly to reserving those pods. And we do have quite a bit of people, you know, word of mouth is picking up that are using them and have enjoyed using them. So we're very happy to have those spaces available for the community. Next, we did have our story time with the firefighter. So you'll see it was very popular. It was right out in the parking lot. The story time was inside, but the, you know, the highlight is of course the fire truck. So all the kids got fire, little fire hats and got to do, see a little demonstration. And so we had over 100 people attend that event. With our stats, just wanna highlight a few things. Then, you know, year to date, last year, 2.5% increase in items checked out and 11.5% in items checked in. And later down I will have a short gate count of, a report of our gate count as well. Then programming.
That's air warning.
I invite you to visit the library. We, for the month of October, we do have on our art wall, the award winning watercolorist Candy U. She has her art up. And, you know, I do want to shout out to Karen Drucker. She does our art coordination with artists in the community and just to the volunteer who does this and just does a great job in making sure the artists are signed up, the artists take down their art in time and the new artists put their art up every month. And it's been really, working out really wonderfully. On October 17th, we have a building community program with Resilient Los Altos. And the meditation at Los Altos and Woodland has been going really well. We have it on Monday mornings at Los Altos and Monday evenings at Woodland. The Friends have been funding it, but it's, we've gotten compliments. I've actually gotten some emails asking if we're gonna continue it. So people seem to really be enjoying it. Next slide, just a couple of highlights of the children's programs with Halloween coming up. I just wanted to highlight, we will have a Halloween family magic show on October 23rd and not on there. We do an annual tradition of on Halloween, the kids can wear their costumes and we do trickery in the library so the kids are comfortable kind of going to all the guests and coming to the staff and moving into the stalls. And we, we get some, some little non candy treat, some fun stuff. Couple, next one. Just wanted to thank Lali. This is some highlights from our 3D printing programs that we've had. The children's staff have really enjoyed being able to use those at the book clubs and our special programs as well. And see, here's our gate count. This is just a snapshot from year to date. And you'll see the main entrance has gone up 22%. Cafe entrance 55% and the back entrance with Disney Hall has gone up 35%. And this was to help us promote Open Plus, open access to the community.
We have a student's screenshot of the most recent email that we now, we have a big, our marketing department, it's called Patreon Point. And there's targeted emails that can go out to residents of the community. And this was an open access push for more open access, you know, to remind people. And also the QR code has a new video that our marketing team put together about open access. So it's a great video, so.
I don't know. Can't remember. That's it. Okay, that's all I have. If you have any other questions for me.
I just wanna say my husband is a retired firefighter. When you have a firefighter's there and you see him wearing their garb, oftentimes kids are afraid because they look scary in all their garb. And so sometimes when they're in a fire building, the kids run away. And so often it's so great to have them there dressed up in a good way so that kids understand that they're good. And it's not something to run away from, not a monster. Yeah, so it's a really good thing. He still hasn't turned out. And it's out everything. Love it.
Any further discussion, comment? Well, I think it's going straight back to. If we're ready to move on, do we have a city staff update?
I know you've heard enough me tonight as far as PowerPoints and lots of talking, but I appreciate all and on behalf of staff, we appreciate you guys' patience through the process. I know that it was a lot and I just wanna reiterate that everything is in your agenda packet for you to read. I am available individually, so if you do have specific questions, you don't understand something, I, I know that I'm always happy to meet. I'm happy to go to get coffee. I'm an iced tea guy myself, but. And as far as that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have for staff on anything that we've covered tonight or anything from the city.
Any, any comments or questions? Ready to move on, item 15, well, ad hoc committee reports, I don't think we have. Item 15, the question for future agenda items. United Library, Ben, first here?
That was something that we had put on a while ago, so we might want to take it up into the year. I don't even know if it's something that the, the county is interested in. But my thought was just to have an event, you know, with perhaps food trucks and bring people to the library. So, but maybe it's something that we can talk about for next year.
I would like to bring up for future consideration, the driveway into the library. And I would like us to discuss that and the possibility of affecting change.
Any? Do we have, we have to vote on that?
We just.
Oh, okay. Any comment?
To be clear, two people need to agree to put it on.
So we don't need to discuss that now, right?
You can't discuss.
Yeah, alright. So we're ready to move on to John?
I have one request. Just some, I guess. I had a loss for words, some office stuff, business cards. I'd like to ask about business cards. I mean, I need to order them. And commissioners, it's your big perk, your business card. I love it.
I didn't know that we needed a future agenda item, but.
No, no, I didn't mean it. I apologize. I just wanted to get it in before the government. And the last thing is pictures of the commission in the library in the, I mean, you know, I'm getting older.
And I, I think we do need a future agenda item for our reports. The new ad hoc committee for January, right? Oh, we will be in the ad hoc committee report.
So they're good with the new system, all reports from ad hoc committees and commissioner liaisons, they'll have individual sections.
Yeah.
So you won't need to worry about agendizing for the future. It'll be standing like.
Okay, yeah, and I, I would echo what Vice Chair Bizar said with regard to pictures. Cause I have gone into other libraries and they have their pictures of their commissioners up. And I just think it's a way for people to see that there is a possibility for them to participate and maybe volunteer. So I, that's what I thought, that it could be helpful as a, maybe a more marketing tool. And yes, I would request not individual pictures, but a big group picture and I'm gonna stand at the back. So this is, yeah.
Any further requests for future agenda items? Are we? Yeah?
There was one more thing, oh yeah. I would like to agendize our treatment, our web presence to discuss our web presence because the city website is really unusable. I've been doing big stuff on my own to put public documents up on the web. But I'd like to agendize that as a discussion. We're not gonna have a, you know, we're not doing awareness subcommittee per se. But it might be something to discuss. Anyway, so web presence for the library commission.
Have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Any other items for future agenda?
And the new chair that will meet to discuss agendizing for all the future agenda items and where it all works. We'll keep it, everything that is not gonna be potential next meeting would be in a future agenda item, but we've got it all.
Good, okay. Are we ready to adjourn? This is where I am.
Very well. My first meeting, I handed it back to Freddie. I was so afraid.